Zoning commission meeting of Monday, June 17th, the regular meeting to order. We have a full roster of commissioners so that we don't need to appoint any alternates. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the last meeting. And Bruce, I have some comments before you.
My day was erect today. I didn't read the minutes, so I was going to suggest if nobody else read them, that we tabled them until the next meeting. But if you're all set, you're right ahead, Dave.
Yes. In the public hearing sections on the first page, just to type it in.
Type all things.
McLean is spelled with M-C capital L and it got missed quite a few times in the first sixty, sixty things, lines. Down where Bruce asked Mr. Roberts about parking spaces.
Which line are you on?
Six to eighty-two. Eighty-two and eighty-three. I thought that Mr. Roberts said that the accessory apartment was being rented, not the main house. Did I get that wrong?
That's the main house.
The main house is being rented? Okay, so that's correct.
Currently.
Currently, yeah.
Currently, it's the apartment.
Yeah.
But they swapped the applications for the reverse. Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
And so he said, I thought he said that the accessory apartment was being rented on a multi-month basis. Is that?
That's what I got.
That's what I heard. So we should correct that.
Okay, yeah, that makes it sound like the main house is.
On page ninety-five, we have a new attorney. I believe it's Brian, not Ryan. Right, sir?
Right, Ryan?
Yeah, it should be Brian. Again, that's on one forty-eight. Line one forty-eight is the same issue. On line two thirty-five, Jackie got promoted to chair.
Yes. That's awesome.
That's a mistake.
Let's squash that now.
Doug Nevitt.
We tried.
I know. It's in there. Two seconds.
We did a lot of talking.
Yes, you did. Two hours of YouTube.
Days.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I think that was all.
Dave, I have one thing.
Yes.
Line one sixty-two, it said I recused myself. I didn't. Recuse, I just want to bring it up only because I don't have any objection to nineteen dash twenty-seven. I excused myself.
Right.
And then I came right back.
I made a note of that here and skipped over it. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You excused yourself for a minute.
Yeah.
You excused yourself.
Mr. Chairman, on top of the edits that have been proposed, I also propose that line one oh three, Lori Boyko is spelled B-O-Y-K-O, not B-O-Y-C-O. And on line fourteen, the sentence ends forty-five Old Farms Roads. It should be Old Farms Road. And also in Googling, the Zeilmans spell their name, Z-E-I-L-M-A-N. Also on line one fourteen.
Oh, not Zill. Yep, gotcha.
Which line is that?
One, one four.
Oh, one, one four.
We have Zeilman, Z-I-L-L-M-A-N. And it should be Z-E-I-L-M-A-N.
Okay.
Dave, I have a couple more.
Cool, we're really hot. Go ahead.
The second page, eighty-one, line eighty-one, eighty-nine, and ninety-two have my last name incorrectly. There's only, it's only showing one T and there's two Ts. So it's correctly spelled in some other places, but not on those three lines.
I missed that, Bruce, sorry.
Who missed that? Okay. Only two places?
Three. Line eighty-nine and ninety-two.
I see three, okay. Any other corrections? A motion to approve the minutes with the corrections as?
I move to approve the minutes with all the changes suggested. No seconded.
All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Motion passes six, nothing. Okay, the next order of business is, I think why we have an audience. This is not a public hearing, so please don't ground so loudly it makes the TV. But I'm sure people will have opinions. We have to consider this application. It's a very complex situation and a lot of things that we have to consider, especially with respect to the guidelines and standards for decisions. We've had staff prepare the standards for decisions and some questions on each of them, and each of us has to make up our own mind as to what our feeling is on that particular item. So I think we should start the discussion with a motion and then we can proceed to the discussion of that motion.
Okay, for discussion purposes only, so hold the tomatoes. I will make a motion to approve application nineteen twenty-two of Charles Lulahan, Jr., Agent Michael and Jacqueline Roberts. Owners for a special exception pursuant to Article seven, Section C dot one of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a home occupation allowing for a short-term bed and breakfast rental of property located at forty-five Old Farms Road with the following conditions: one, an administrative zoning permit is required; two, no outside guests other than those registered are allowed; three, there shall be no events or parties associated with the rentals; four, there will be onsite, there will be, there shall only be onsite parking. Parking is limited to six guest cars; five, the occupancy is limited to eight guests. This requirement is based on two people per available bedroom; six, no signage is allowed other than a sign indicating guests are not to drive out of the driveway; and seven, owners shall be, must be onsite during rentals.
Okay, can I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Donna.
And that one signage item was supposed to be not exterior anyway.
Okay. So let's proceed through the standards. The first standard is the need for the proposed.
Dave, let me just ask a question. Are you going to do this in reverse order? I have a whole array of issues that are not in those standards. They're related to the regulation and the implication versus the language of the regulation well before we get to the standards.
Let's go through the standards and then if we haven't covered something, you can bring it up.
Okay.
Okay. Let's start with the need for the proposed use in the proposed location. Jackie, do you have any comments on that?
I don't think there's a direct need for this, for a bed and breakfast in this residential neighborhood.
Anybody else? Are there, are there any other such businesses available in town? Is there enough of them?
Well, there's three bed and breakfasts in town and none of them.
We're not too.
Two?
Yeah.
Okay. And they're both on routes. One is on Route one sixty-seven and the other one is on Route ten and two oh two. Completely different type of location than this.
Okay, and there are some number of motels and commercial establishments.
Well, I will go further. I mean, I think there is a need in town for this and I think that, you know, we can recognize that need in suggesting that we handle this through ordinance because if there wasn't a need, these places wouldn't be renting now.
Right.
So I do think there is a need. I think there is an economic benefit to it, but I think it needs to be regulated differently than through zoning.
I would agree.
Okay, Donna, comments on that?
I would agree with that. I don't, I don't think we've maxed out by any means on short-term stay, but I think that we've discussed a different way to handle it.
Okay, well, we've got a number of these to discuss. The existing, the second one is the existing and future character of the neighborhoods in which the use is to be located.
Dave, wait a minute.
Yep.
I got something to say on.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Don't be shy.
Not a huge point and not particularly different from the earlier comments, but I think there was not compelling argument made for that use in that location. And when I think of that location, I'm not thinking about the state of Connecticut and I'm not thinking about the town of Simsbury. I'm thinking about generally that area of Old Farms Road. The regulation says in the proposed location.
Right.
They didn't propose it for somewhere else in Simsbury. They proposed it for forty-five Old Farms Road. And so that's the framework I use in coming to the conclusion. I didn't hear any compelling argument. I didn't even hear an effort at a compelling argument that it's needed in that location. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. That's, that's a good point. Let's go on to the next one. The existing and future character of the neighborhood in which the use is to be located. And staff has suggested, does this change the residential character? What do we think?
I would think so, yes.
I agree. I mean, any type of short-term rental is going to change the character of the neighborhood. You know, the, these are all single-family homes and the, the owners that bought them were figuring that everybody around them were going to be just like them, buying a piece of property and living there.
Kevin?
Okay. I'll be the contrarian again. I do think actually that property would be a good, it makes sense as it being, if it were managed properly so that the neighbors don't even notice that you're having house guests. I think that property is somewhat unique. And as far as that street is concerned, that particular street, I see a lot of, there is already a lot of traffic on that street because you've got the farms, well, you've got the Apple Barn, you've got the farms, you've got a commercial golf course there, you've got a commercial restaurant there, and then not very far away, you have a church, all of which are traffic generators.
It's also a sub artery north-south.
So, you know, I'm not saying that this isn't like it's a cul-de-sac.
Right.
So, you know, I wouldn't go that way, no. Having said all that, I'll go back to the ordinance and I think that we're regulating it the wrong way. I don't think this is a zoning issue. I think this is an ordinance issue and that's the way. I would vote on it, yeah.
Donna?
The nature of the road, I'd have to agree a little bit with Kevin in that I'm not getting the sense of a dense residential area. The house kind of sits by itself, but again, in that light, there are neighborhoods in the area and it is a commercial venture, so I'm thinking on that one.
Bruce? Well, my thought actually is that there was ample in-person testimony during the public hearings plus written submittals that convinced me the character of the neighborhood is more likely than not to suffer adverse effects if the Robards lodging business is enlarged by approval of this application. Their track record of impacts on the immediate community is unfortunate for all involved and leads me not to expect different behaviors from the Robards in the future. That's my thought on that point.
Okay. The location of the main accessory buildings is the next, and that's really not applicable. The height and the bulk of the buildings in relation to other structures isn't really applicable. The next one is traffic circulation within the site, amount, location, and access to parking, traffic load, or possible circulation problems in existing streets. We've had a lot of testimony and photographs and pictures about, about that. What you're feeling?
I do have some concerns for traffic. I, I agree with Kevin. The road itself is or can be considered a cut through, but this in its nature is going to add cars. This is going to add traffic, so I do think that's something to consider.
Amy, Kevin?
Mike?
Mike?
No, I agree with Jackie.
Yeah, I think the comment here that, that having people that were just there overnight would not be familiar with the road and the situation, whereas as an accessory apartment with somebody living there for three or four months at a time.
Right.
There's less likelihood that they would adapt, better likelihood that they would adapt to the situation. Kevin?
What I would say on that one, I don't think overall it would change the neighborhood, but I think six cars is probably too much for that, that yard.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe it can handle it, but I just think it, you know, that would be obviously different than the rest of the neighborhood. And so I would say from that standpoint, I think it's overparked. So if they were going to do it as a bed and breakfast, I would say it should be more limited to the number of guests that would be allowed there.
Donna?
Yeah, I have a concern about the traffic and the parking. I think we, we heard enough people say that it's a little trickier than it looks in the pictures and we have unfamiliar people and we have a large amount of cars pulling in and out, people who don't know where they're going. So I do have a concern about that.
Bruce?
My thoughts, and this, you know, for an hour, several minutes on this one subsection, but it has to do with the site, the amount, location, and relates to traffic circulation and access to parking, traffic load, and some other issues. But I thought we heard a lot of concerns on these issues during the public hearing. And while the applicants insist there's no actual problems with these areas, we weren't able to precisely evaluate issues within the site because the application nineteen twenty-two was submitted without the required site plan. They cite Article seven, Section C as the basis for the application. Article seven, Section C is very plain in calling for the submittal of a site plan with the application. And we can't evaluate some of these issues properly and fully without the site plan. I had some other related thoughts to the site plan absence, but we can come back to that.
Okay.
So parking, and I asked the applicant, as I'm sure you remember, about how wide were the parking spaces? He didn't know. He wanted, he suggested that we could go measured if we wanted to. Those are issues that are supposed to be in the site plan. There's a regulation that describes a site plan. They've been advised by counsel, I think he's here tonight. I don't, I don't know why there's no site plan for us to look at, but we have to work with what we've been given. I think the application's incomplete, but that's only my opinion. If it was there, I don't know that I would support it, but those are my thoughts on item E, subsection E.
Next consideration is the availability of water to the site, inadequate disposal of sewage in stormwater. Farmington Valley Health District said that there were no problems with septic or permitting for this use.
What is it, four bedrooms or six? Because it's been listed before as six bedrooms. And the Farmington Valley Health District said for four bedrooms, there are no issues.
There's an accessory apartment.
Right.
So if they listed it all for rent, four bedrooms and two bedrooms and accessory apartment, that would add up to six.
Right, but I think what he's saying.
What he's saying is.
The septic has to go for how many bedrooms.
It has to go for all six.
Right.
Yeah, but I would assume they're legal at this point in time.
Yeah, they're legal at this point.
So they have enough septic.
For the, for the accessory use. That was probably done the last time we went through the accessory use thing. Anybody have any other questions on that?
No.
Here we are. Location and type of display signs and lighting, loading zone, and landscaping. Again, the only thing that was possible here is a no backing under the driveway zone, sign. That's what our staff says. I don't, anybody have any comments?
Well, my only comment was just because landscaping was in that letter G. I know they said they trimmed back bushes. Like I said in one of the hearings, I drove it. It is a very tricky road. They're due to landscaping, so that is a consideration.
Okay, so the landscaping situation is negative.
Correct.
For your, in your view. Okay, safeguards to protect adjacent property in the neighborhood in general from detriment. There were, proposed a number of things. One was house rules outside quiet time and begins at, this says nine o'clock, but I thought they said ten.
Their rules say nine.
Nine, okay. No events or outside guests, limiting number of overnights to, in a calendar year to seventy-two. Owners to be onsite during rentals, proposal for renting an entire house, not in individual rooms, and they offered a trial period. Any comments on those things?
Bruce does.
But rather than wander around in terms of comments, let me just read the thoughts as I compose them before the meeting. I start with, "We heard persuasive testimony from a resident who has a professional history as a real estate agent and a residential mortgage administrator. She essentially told us that expanding the Robards lodging business would hurt property values in the area. That same perspective was offered in writing by another real estate professional. The public hearing was replete with in-person and written testimony to that effect, with several of the immediate neighbors asserting they would not have purchased their current homes if they'd known the lodging business could be permitted in the home of a neighbor. While the applicant disagreed with the potential of their business to have a negative effect on the property values in, in immediate area, they did not offer any factual basis for their position. Based on what we heard and read during the hearing, I agree the applied-for lodging business is more likely than not to adversely affect home values in the area. Additionally, the Robards' proposal includes a number of elements included as means of limiting the risks related to the application nineteen twenty-two. Among them are commitments to limit rental of the eighty-five percent portion of the residents to just six days per month, announcing to guests they would not have visitors, the several issues raised by house rules. Their vision of the lodging business is totally impractical for town staff to take on responsibility for monitoring compliance. Consequently, the lodging business will need to be controlled by reactive monitoring by neighbors, who will be expected to maintain awareness and report violations. I personally can't support placing that burden on the residents in the immediate area of forty-five Old Farms Road." Those are my thoughts on that point.
Thank you, Bruce. I think that covers a lot of the ground here. Anyone have other?
Yeah, I would concur with the, with the rules part of what Bruce said. If, if it's conducive, if it's, if it's going to be okay where it's going to be, I kind of feel like then we shouldn't have to put all these little rules on it to make it okay. It either is going to, to fit in or I just feel like we're, we're making up a lot of little rules to kind of bend it the way we want it to go. So I'm uncomfortable with, with all the add-ons, I guess I would say.
Difficult, this, Bruce said, difficult to monitor and control.
Right, right.
The last bullet, Mr. Chairman, do we even have a vehicle for some type of conditional approval or a trial period? I couldn't find anything.
There's, I'm told by staff, there are, if the applicant agrees to it, perhaps that would be, would stand in court. However, there have been other cases where it didn't stand in court. So I would say our, our thing should be that we don't, you don't grant special exceptions on a temporary basis. It's, it's contrary to the idea that it goes with the land.
Right.
For one thing.
That was one of the reasons we could do it in an ordinance, regulate this type of business in an ordinance, because you can do it in an ordinance.
Right.
You can't do it through zoning regs.
And you can remove it very easily, whereas a special exception goes with the land. They could sell the property and no person comes in. So I didn't know that.
Just on, on top of what, what Bruce has already said, the business model that was proposed to me really wasn't that of a bed and breakfast. To say that you're going to rent your whole house out and provide.
Bigged goods?
Bigged goods on the table, you know, that's not a bed and breakfast to me. A bed and breakfast to me should be running out a room, you're engaged with the guests. Basically, to me, the business plan here was asking for a one-day rental, a really short-term rental of the property instead of operating, renting a true bed and breakfast. You know, if it had been a true bed and breakfast, had been run that way from the beginning, you might not have seen the opposition that we saw.
Correct.
Because they may never even have noticed.
Right. And it would have been existing when other people were moving into the area, like you said, not losing it.
The other, the other operations that are run, I don't even think the neighbors.
No.
Know that they're, it's no different than having house guests for the weekend. But it's very different when you have a very active, engaged host than just saying, well, here's the keys to the place, you have to be quiet after nine o'clock. There's no control there. It's not the same environment.
And is Wednesday the same as Saturday?
And the rule that you can't have any guests, well, if I were staying there, you know, I might have someone come stay with me, you know, just come visit me or pick me up or something. And so I think none of those rules are really easily monitored.
And Bruce is pointing out, crystal clear on that.
Have we had adequate discussion?
No.
Bruce has something to say.
Not even close.
Well, conceptually, we're close. I just want to add again on the thing with the, the failure to supply a site plan and the significance of it. At, at minimum, the site plan would have provided the ability for the commission to make a precise assessment of adequacy of a parking plan, incline of the driveway, and the planned signage to warn guests not to back out onto Old Farms Road. These three specific issues were associated with security concerns that were brought up during the public hearing.
Bruce, are you suggesting if they came back with a site plan, that that would solve the problem?
No, I'm pointing out that the absence of a site plan is an irrefutable failure in the submittal.
In this application.
Irrefutable. There's no question it's supposed to be there and there's a reason why, and I'm just reminding what the reasons are.
Okay, but I, I think.
I don't have anything else to say about it.
The question is, am I going to vote on, on its merits or am I going to vote on it as an incomplete?
I think we have to act on the documents that were given to us. If the applicant elects to submit something that's incomplete or incorrect, that's, you know, that's okay with me. I mean, we waste a lot of time evaluating something that is inadequate or incomplete, but it's not the first time. I did have one more substantial issue that I want to raise, and that is, you know, we start with this question that Article seven, Section C one gets to the, the heart of the matter in my mind about a home occupation. And I can remember when counsel kind of blew by that, this issue, it's common sense, everybody would see that this is a home occupation, that they're applying for, so this, you know, that's no problem. But our, our zoning regulation has a definition of a home occupation, and, and what it says is an occupation customarily carried on by an occupant of a dwelling as a secondary use, secondary use, which is clearly incidental to the use of the dwelling in residential purposes. The zoning regs don't actually define what a secondary purpose is, so, you know, we could all sort of guess at what the meaning is, but it says that it has to be a secondary purpose. So I, in trying to find some perspective on that, I looked at the regulations in the town of, the valley towns, Avon, Canton, Farmington, and Granby, and they all say something similar about it has to be a secondary use.
Secondary, to residence.
But, yeah, and, but more specifically, they use a percentage, that there's a percentage cap. So in the towns of Granby, Canton, Farmington, and Avon, they use a figure of either twenty-five percent or thirty percent of the living space of the residents. That's it for the size of this secondary business.
I think you're getting off the track by introducing.
No, my point is that.
Materials that weren't presented.
This was presented in, in terms of the question of, does it meet the definition of a home occupation? And the fact that it is, it does not. If we think there's any reasonable standard for what a home occupation is, it has to be secondary. That's what the regulation says, secondary. So the house is forty-three hundred and seven square feet of living space, and they are looking for a approval to rent the whole house, living space figure, less the ADU, which is six hundred and thirty square feet. So they're looking to rent. Now, they want approval to rent the eighty-five percent that's not already authorized as a rental business. So the already authorized ADU happens to be fifteen percent of the living space in the house, so we've already given them that. Now they want the other eighty-five percent to be a lodging business too. Now, the way it's been presented, there would only. Now, the way it's been presented, there would only be one with renters. One or the other would have a renter, and the owners would live in, you know, the other one. But my, my concern is that when you say, okay, potentially, we'll give you the main part of the house to rent, that's eighty-five percent. That has nothing to do with the way this is being regulated in other towns. I think as if we're reasonable and want to look for some help with understanding what secondary means, once the thing exceeds fifty percent, you can't argue that it's secondary. And this is eighty-five percent of the living space of that house. This thing doesn't meet the definition of a home occupation.
Okay, but that, that's the reasons for your vote.
All of these are reasons for my vote. All those are reasons for my vote, and I want them on the record in case we have to, you know, explain this further. My last point is our regulation provides very clearly also in that, um, Section C, that the, oh, excuse me, it's Article seven, Section B, four, that business has to be wholly contained in the primary, primary structure, the primary building. And yet, we had testimony, and now we have the house rules that speak to a barbecue area that's going to be outside into the rear of the property, that's going to be set up specifically for the guests. That's not inside the building, that's outside the building. That's absolutely crystal clear, contrary to the regulations. So, that also is cause for a failure to meet the expectations, in my mind, of what the regulation says. And that's not an interpretation, that's black and white. They told us they were putting in a barbecue area just for the guests, and that the house rules says that it's for the guests. There's no question it's going there, and it's not there now. Or it wasn't described as having already been installed during the testimony in the public hearing. So, it's not contained inside the principal structure, the barbecue area for the guests. So, another cause for failure to meet the requirements of the regulation.
Thank you. I think your list is thorough, and I think, anybody have any comments on those items?
I think we went through the standards pretty clearly.
Standards, and Bruce has brought up some other concerns within the regulations that I think violate, where it violates the regulations. I think we're prepared to vote.
Maybe I'm just temporary.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Six, oh-six, motion fails. Thank you.
There's more if you want to stay.
Okay. Next application is nineteen-twenty-three of Matthew Whitmer, Phase Zero Design.
He's on the hall, isn't he?
Staff gave us a report. Okay. Sorry, Jackie?
I was just asking.
Okay. Matt, you want to go ahead?
Good evening. For the record, I'm Matt Whitmer of Phase Zero Design Architects. I'm with my client, Stephen Walker, for the Drake Hill Mall Monument Sign. We had submitted previously to you the monument sign that you see here. I know there were some comments and feedback certainly, which is appreciated, and allowed us to take a second look at some of the signage that's there and some of the thinking behind where this was, was going and some of the concerns. I know there were some concerns about the different colors of the signage. What we wanted to do is come back to you with a bit of a compromise and bring forward a sign that not only had the, the tenants' names in there, but also reduced the coloring from what we had previously. So, that's what we have here now. We wanted to maintain the, the green that we've had previously. Certainly, the red for CVS Pharmacy, we wanted to have. The white background is maintained, and then the individual tenants here. We have black lettering. They have found this acceptable. They're, they're certainly have approached us and wanted to see something happen. The black is, is fine. The Peach Wave, however, wanted to keep the orange, which is the orange that's on their sign right now. It's something that they were pretty much wanting to see be maintained. So, while it may not seem like a compromise, at least we've come, you know, further with eliminating some of the blues that were on there, some of the different hues of greens, unifying that to, to one color. And we did get a lot of feedback from the tenants throughout this process. There's certainly a desire by them to see this happen. CVS is, is unfortunately not interested in doing a, a green. You know, Fitzgerald is the main tenant as well, you know, wants to maintain the, the green color that they have. But overall, we think that this does help unify what's out there. It's going to make something that's fairly clear with the new monument. I had presented previously the existing monument sign that's there now, which we're interested in.
You're not a dog.
That's actually, that's actually here right now. So, it sees where we've been and certainly where we're heading. So, I was thinking, in that case, I'm just going to open this up to any discussion, if there is any, and, you know, we can certainly talk a little bit more about what led us to these decisions.
Design Review.
Design Review gave it a favorable recommendation, actually, on the first version. They were okay with it. You have some correspondence that should be in your packet from Design Review. The reviews, the unified look where just have a white background, one, one color from the text. They felt due to the location of the proposed sign that that would get lost in the landscape, and they were okay with the alternative design of having multi-color fonts on the sign. So, they gave a favorable recommendation.
Okay.
The problem I have, though, is depending on, so, say this is a compromise. If you get another tenant in that has a different color, then we still have no plan, because we compromised specifically on these tenants and these colors for these tenants. And a unified plan is going to, another tenant comes in, this is the plan, this is the color, this is, this is what we're supposed to do. You know, we're good to go. So, I mean, that would be my comment on that. I don't mind the different fonts if we can stick to a color scheme.
So, the staff report has, there's three options the commission has for this. One, you can deny the application based on Chapter six, Section four, seven, B one E. That's the section of the Form-based code that requires freestanding signs be a white or off-white back, background and one color for the fonts. The next, in the same section of the regs, gives the commission the ability to have discretion on approving a different color scheme, so multi-colored scheme, multi-different colors fonts. The last is the commission can approve it with the condition that the text for the freestanding sign be one of the following colors, dark green, maroon, or black. So, that would be aligned with your comments for, if you may, Donna. So, that's your, the three options you have.
I would be in favor of that, of option three.
So, would that make it all black and white with no color? Or could we do green and black?
Your background is totally white, and they all, all lettering is one color. You'd give them the choice to pick either dark green, maroon, or black.
Follow the regulations.
The borders and font colors shall be-
Well, if I may, I believe the regulation also gives you the opportunity to approve a, a third option, which is that you can approve different colors on the, the sign.
That was the second one that explained.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have the discretion. So, that's the three options the commission has for this application.
You know, I can show you as well, if you, if this helps, that there's a, the monument sign is, this was actually an exhibit that I issued earlier in the process, but you can see the monument, well, look hard, you can see the monument sign there right now. And that's actually what we're trying to avoid or eliminate, is the fact that that just blends right in. And, you know, you really, you, you can't see it at all from a wayfanning standpoint. And unfortunately, with the way the building is located, you don't see the buildings, the signage on the building either.
I would disagree with that. I think-
I would completely disagree with that.
You can see, read all of those signs.
Here is the image right here of the building, so I'll bring this over to you. And you can see that it is very difficult to read the building sign.
I stood on the sidewalk, and I read every sign, and I have photos.
And that's it.
Understood, but Hot Meadow is a, is a vehicular road. There's actually not a sidewalk there, so the traffic is mostly through vehicles.
And I would interpret that the exception there is, we could accept a different color, but a kind of consistence, you know, a consistent color, it could just be different than the one of the, the three that we, we stayed out, or green, maroon, or black. So, if you came in and said, you know, we want blue, it's got to be blue. I think we could make that exception, but you can't have green, maroon, and black, and blue. I don't think that was, was the intent of the exception.
So, so then, if we did this one, he could have white, and they could either choose from green, maroon, or black, and mix on the sign.
No.
No.
No, it's one color.
Yeah.
All the text would be one color.
One color.
How did Design Review feel about that? They really didn't care about the fact there are different colors?
They were okay with the different colors. Like I said, they were, they looked at it from the sense the, the two-color scheme would get lost in the landscape. You wouldn't really have the ability to identify the, the sign at the entrance due to landscaping, curvature of the road, tapag, et cetera. They gave, they actually discussed that for, oh, it was a five, ten-minute conversation, and they landed on, they were okay with this. They felt that still with all, with the tree placement, where this is going, trees, et cetera, that it's, it wouldn't jump out at you as something out of play. At least, that's what was their opinion. That's why they made their favorable recommendation.
And these are companies' trademarks, so of course, they're going to defend them, you know? And in the case of Peach Wave, that logo is on the building, so you can see it. You know, some of the other properties, some of the other businesses have a, a little bit more of a unified sign set up, but, you know, they're all going to want something like Peach Wave has, since it's on the corner of the building, where they have their own mark that, that is easily identifiable through all the branding that they've invested millions, in the case of Peach Wave and CVS, and thousands in the case of the other companies. So, you know, I, I don't have a problem with it being the individuals. Yes, it's a lot of different little colors, but the only time you're ever going to notice it is when you're standing at that corner, looking across it, because you're going to drive right by anyway.
Design Review also increased the size, the square footage, and that's not something-
Zoni did.
Oh, ZD.
Yeah, I, I think that, given the difficulty of seeing it, and the arguments that Mike was presenting on the efforts to brand their companies and keep their businesses going, I, I concur with Design Review that putting them in a straitjacket of color doesn't seem to suit what we should be doing.
So, I agree with that. When they do their, you know, you say it's national branding and everything. When they put an ad in a newspaper, it's black and white, and they still have their brand.
Not so much anymore. Not so much anymore.
Oh, yeah, the newspaper's black and white.
Yeah.
No, so, and it comes out, you know, when you design a logo, you got to design it so that it will print-
And they all have. Except for maybe Peach Wave, who has a little bit of gradient in there potentially, but, you know.
But as you go up and down Hot Meadow, they're all one color, well, two color. You got a background, and it adds a little bit of class.
But we don't.
Yeah, we do.
No, we don't.
This is what we have up and down Hot Meadow, and, you know, you do allow branding.
On, on, on the building, yeah.
Right.
So, you know, and some of the monuments that we have here too, that we wanted to, to share. So, you know, there's a lot going on, but again, it's, it's, it's understanding the, and being respectful to the retailer and giving them an opportunity to, for them to be found. That's what we're, we're certainly most concerned with.
Well, I mean, Mike, what did, did DRB spend any time discussing the current regulation? Do they know what the current regulation is?
They actually looked at more the visibility of the sign. That's what they're-
Did they discuss the current regulation?
DRB is not concerned with the zoning regulations.
Do they know this doesn't meet the current regulation?
They've used theirs, and they're looking at the visibility, and they felt that the two-color scheme would just be lost. So, therefore, you have something that's supposed to identify a business, and now it's just part of the background. It's not being visible. One thing in the Design Review guidelines is that if you're having a sign, you have to have a legible message. So, if you're, you're doing a color scheme, then now you just, you lose it. It's, it's not a sign. It's not functioning as it's supposed to be. Therefore, you should remove it. They felt with that multi-colored scheme, the message, you know, the identification jumps out at you. You have that ability to know, oh, this is, this is the entrance to, or this is where, you know, the TD bank is located. Kind of what the chairman spoke about the last meeting, that we discussed this matter. You know, if you're, where's the T, where's your TD? You're looking for that green, green and white and black logo to go to your, to go to the ATM.
Mr. ATM.
I, I feel like we have a regulation for a purpose, and the regulation's purpose primarily is to ensure there's some continuity, consistency, and common appearance as you drive through the center of Simsbury and, and elsewhere in Simsbury. But if we start allowing every business to have their logo on their sign out on the street, we're not going to have that. No. Arguably, maybe we should.
Maybe it's time to look at the regulation.
Well, and I was going to get to that, Mike, because I think we have a responsibility to administer the regulations we have. Not the ones we wish we have, but the ones that we have. And the ones that we have limit the colors. If we don't want to administer the regulations as they are, we should ask these guys to hold off on this, and somebody submit a text amendment and consider change in the regulation, see if the case can be really made. And then we should expect that McDonald's is going to be down here looking for their golden arches out there on Route forty-four.
But Bruce, I, I, element two here, or choice two the staff gave us, said that we have, under our regs, the ability to approve that sign.
Well, I'm not familiar with that one.
Interpretation that the commission could take. I don't think staff was saying one way or the other.
Right. Yeah, these are your options.
Is that written here somewhere in the regulation? In the regulation, not the option?
Section.
It's where?
Sites to the section of the regs.
Chapter six, seven.
Section four, four, seven.
Six, four, seven, B, B one E.
Gives us the option to vary the colors.
I don't, I don't think that was the way the regulation was intended. Extreme interpretation of it. And I think we have the, the history that we use signs as identification, not advertising. So, for you to say that it's all designed for national advertising, that is not the intent of our sign regulations in Simsbury. So, it's designed so that you can see that, that, you know, okay, this place is here, but it's not an advertisement. We don't go and say, you know, well, actually, they do have a little bit of extra advertising on there, but really, our, the intent of our signage is identification of the building, location, not advertising.
And it's, to me, some of that is onerous. And if the regulation permits us to approve that- And if the regulation permits us to approve that.
I don't, I don't think it does permit it. I think it, no, I think it says it permits you to change the colors, the three colors. I don't think it gives you the permission to just do all different colors.
It says right here that, Commission, this is.
Yeah. It depends on how you interpret that reg.
I'd like to actually read it myself. I didn't copy that.
It's on page 614. Do you have, do you want my regs?
I only have 613 and the ones before it. I don't have 614. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that isn't there, I just wanted to familiarize myself.
It's right here, color.
Mike, he's doing that, there's actually another issue as to whether it's upside, or is the lighting up or is the lighting down? Because we have.
I have that.
Oh, you have that.
We're actually, not, with the Dark Sky Initiative, you shouldn't be doing uplight.
Yeah, this doesn't bleed off the sign, so it's very similar to what we've done.
He was saying it's 614B, or it's six.
Some of the other locations, the front lane right now.
14B1.
Shooting up, just washing the sign, the ending, well before the edge of the building. This wouldn't go beyond the decorative cornice on the sign itself.
It says that somewhere in there, specs here, that it says installs from 10 to 25 feet of height.
Yeah, but we're certainly aware of the regs, and that's certainly what we have.
Well, that's a different section. Okay, I got it, I got it, okay.
Okay, Bruce, you were.
I'm familiar with the regulation, and I think as Kevin does, that's, that's not the interpretation I would offer to those words in our regulation, that we have latitude under this regulation to accept that sign.
We can accept it. I mean, that's.
You only need four votes.
It's, they'll stand up in court.
Wow.
Is the question. But I think we have.
I don't think that's true. I don't think you can just ignore your regulations and approve anything.
Kevin, to your point, you're not wrong. The mark that CBS designed and TD Bank designed very clearly is, you can identify as one color or two colors with a negative background pretty easily. Peach Wave gets a little lost, but, you know, there's, there's definitely a case where they don't lose the, we're not infringing on their trademark because we're requiring them to change the color, but I'm no trademark attorney, so I could be just.
Keep in mind, this regulation hasn't changed one word since April 15th of 2011, eight years ago. Eight years. No changes, and now we can't live with it?
Fair enough.
Well, I will, I will add in closing, because I sense we're moving to a closure point here. You know, it's a, it's a major structure in town, you know, it's a, it's a major taxpayer, and obviously have tenants that not only want to be seen, but want to be successful. And it's certainly the nature of what we want to see in our town, I would imagine, being someone that lives in town myself. I will say that there are monuments that obviously have different colors, so I don't know, and that's in the downtown area, if somehow that was some way modified previously or not, but certainly, there are examples of that. You know, we believe that we've provided some alternatives here. I won't speak for my client and say, I know that, you know, this is something that there's a strong desire to do, but if this doesn't go forward, you know, it's certainly not being supported by the tenants, and it's probably not gonna be supported by, by my client as well. So in that case, we would maintain the existing monument sign that's there right now.
Okay.
Which would technically be nonconforming with that TD Bank, or is that an overlaid image?
It's an overlaid image.
Okay.
So Steve Walker from Grove Property, so, you know, we're making a major investment over there for Fitzgerald and Booth. I mean, local, soon, very person, works very hard, everybody on the board probably knows him, you know? And, you know, we try to do a first-rate job at everything we do. This is a first-rate sign. I mean, I think if you take a drive around Simsbury, if you took a drive around Simsbury the other day when I took some of these pictures, I think you'd be surprised that a lot of the properties in the town are, they're not in very good shape, you know? We take pride in what we do. You know, we brought you Starbucks across the street. You know, we used to own the Simsbury Town Shops. That place was a mess before we bought it, you know, a total mess. You know, we've done some really nice things for this community, and we'd like to do one more nice thing. This sign is very important to the tenants of my shopping center. That's all I have to say.
Okay, well, I sense, Jackie, you're against.
Yep, I would be for.
Yeah, I'm for it.
I'm for it. You're against it?
Oh, great. Well, wait, can we just clarify? I'm not against it, I would be for option number three. Like, let's just be clear, because we have options. I'm not in favor of denying it.
Right, so it's two or three is what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think we have to decide.
Pardon?
So, I mean, you can't have two for number two and one for number three. Are we, what are we deciding, this side?
Informally, we can.
I'm just saying, between two and three, what is your choice?
The problem I have, so if we approve it as presented.
You wouldn't.
Number two, right?
Yeah.
As presented, then you have a different tenant. It's not as presented anymore. So that's what makes me uncomfortable.
They have to come back.
No.
Okay.
Because there's no, no guideline.
Yeah.
So, okay, I, I don't mind that one. I don't mind that one, but, okay, so Hans goes out, then it's not as presented anymore. So that's the problem I have with number two. Because we're only voting on that exact sign with those exact tenants.
Right. So it would seem to me that they'd have to come back to change it.
But they wouldn't have to come back to change it.
You know, if the same size, they swap them in.
Yeah, different color.
We just go to DRB only.
And we know, then they would say, yeah.
If you're just talking about an internal swap out, let's say, like you said, Bill Selig leaves, and Mike Liddens, whatever, moves in there.
Chocolates.
Chocolates, yes. I'm gonna replace the jewelry with a chocolate shop. Then it would just, provided I'm not increasing the size of that size, as shown on that monument sign there, the swap out would just go to the Design Review Board.
Okay, but we have Design Review Board, I'm happy with them. I mean, that's their job, for me.
But they're not looking at the zoning regs.
No, they're looking at, that's been permitted, they're just doing their job evaluating it. I don't know, I think we're being a little hard on some people that are trying to make some change and spend some money in this town.
Well, they can spend money on a sign that's dark green, maroon, or black too.
Yeah, Dave, it's in the center code. I mean, there's something to be said for that.
Yeah, we don't want to talk about how much we spent for that code.
That's not one of the conditions of our zoning regulations.
A lot more than that sign.
How much they're spending is not.
Staff says we can vote for this, and it's not against the code. That's what I'm hearing from them.
Right.
So we're not changing the code or avoiding the code.
It's interpretation of the code, and I don't think that was the way that code is meant.
Okay, well, you can vote.
Right, then I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, I move.
Let's get the sense of the commission before we start charging off.
I'm supportive of the, you know, the scenario number three.
What's mine?
And, you know, my underlying concern is, I don't agree with the interpretation that Mike suggested that we apply to this thing, so.
You and Kevin.
But I think they deserve approval of a sign, and so I'm with number three.
Consent of them is four to two against number two. So I would say, make a motion along the lines of number three.
Right. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve application 1923 of Matthew Whitmer, Phase Zero Design Agent Grove Property Fund, Drake Hill LLC owner, for a sign permit for Drake Hill Mall Monument, signed on the property located at 710-720 Hot Meadow Street, with the following additions. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction of the sign, and two, the background of the sign shall be white with all fonts and logos to either be one of the following colors, dark green, maroon, or black.
Well, second.
Second, Mike. Jackie, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to two.
So, excuse me, we within the draw of this application.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, we have application 1928 for side plan amendments to construction of roof structure, and Mike and I are.
Yep.
Accusing ourselves as we're on the board.
I'm again, subject to being primed as he and Linda are vacationing.
Okay, give your name and address then.
My name is Bill Clegg, and I live at 32 Brook Drive in Simsbury, Connecticut.
Okay, can you spell that for the court?
C-L-E-G-G, and Brooklyn, New York. So I think Missy Nunu had made a presentation to you guys a couple weeks ago about the shed on the barn at the Simsbury Performing Arts Center, which is going to house the chairs that we bought last year to help offset some of our costs. And I think there were some, as I recall, there were some details about that, that maybe there were some questions about that. Missy didn't have all of the information at the time, so I'm gonna try to fill in some of that now, and hopefully resolve the issues that may be with that. So one of the questions was, what were the colors of the tarps? And the color of the tarps will be brown, so as best we can, buying commercial tarps, matching it closely to the red of the barn. It's not exactly a match, but at least it's not blue. You know, trying not to make it be something that is standing out in any way. Let me remind that this is a, the use of this shed is temporary during the season. So during the season, we need to be able to store those chairs in a place that they are out of the rain, because the barn is very used actively during the season. So vehicles and beverages and all sorts of things that are being used in that, so we really can't store the chairs inside the barn.
We weren't told, I'm sorry, we weren't told what material you were using, and we don't have any.
There was a drawing that I thought was handed out last time. No. We, you.
We had asked for a different material potentially than a tarp, and we had asked for.
I hadn't heard that.
Yeah.
I thought you were looking for.
I don't remember that at all.
Yeah, we were looking for something else to be more in keeping with the way that the barn looks, that kind of thing, and we were told that that would be thought about and then brought back to us. So we don't have colors, we don't have photos of anything.
I apologize, I, when I was at the meeting, I did not hear that there was an alternate material that was being considered.
Well, we talked, and it doesn't have to be all the way up. We're actually asking that you cover the chairs, you know, so the visibility of the chairs. Because when, you know, yeah, it's only used for the summer season, but when you come in, you will see them there.
No, the tarps will be taken down at the end of the season.
Right, but the chairs would be there, that's what we're trying to cover.
The chairs would be stored inside the barn at the end of the season.
Yeah, you may have done the tarps with another, maybe you did the tarps with Design Review.
Yeah.
Is a blind type thing, and you guys were gonna have a discussion.
So, your memory of the meeting is the same as ours, as staff.
Yeah, okay.
The ball was in their court, and he suggested alternatives, and he said, I can't make a decision based on limited information, it just had.
Even with the tarps, how are the tarps gonna be connected? How are they gonna be pulled up, pulled down?
Little diagram of how they would connect it. So they'll be hung with a, no bungee cords or anything along those lines, just a couple of furring strips at the bottom that will weight it down, you roll it up, there's a nice hook on the top, so it makes it easy to be able to access them, and please share that.
Mm-hmm. I think we were looking for a different material or something else, like we said, some, whether it's wood, whether it's something to cover where the chairs are, that water can go under if it needs to.
We're trying to actually keep the water out.
No, you're being in the flood.
That's why, that's why this whole thing, this has to be temporary and because of the flood.
What we discussed was screening plan, shutters, curtains, louvert, shutters.
It must have been a different meeting.
So.
I mean, it could even be a lattice, something or other, because, you mean, how high do you stack the chairs?
Yeah, a lattice would be hard to maneuver.
Six feet. No, you can, you take it off, and then you, you only do it, you know, for the concert, and you take it off, and, so they need to get a forklift in there, is the deal. But there's alternatives, I think, the idea was, yeah, we'd come back with the.
Our idea was shutters, something else that's more in keeping with the barn.
A barn look.
Yep.
I don't think I was the only one mistaken, because we've already bought them.
The same thing, it would typically be presented to us with color, and we, you know, photos and that kind of thing. We don't have anything new since the last meeting.
I have a drawing.
Thanks, I'm bored.
I think we're gonna have to table until the next meeting, and so we can get some more information.
Okay.
So the tarps will only partially cover the altar.
I think they drop all the way down, their weight is at the bottom.
They're weighted by the furring strips.
Right.
So they hold in place, and they're not orange bungee cords, it just hangs there, and allows it to move with the wind, so it doesn't tear.
Can they meet with you to discuss, come up with some ideas, or?
Sure.
Okay, then, do we have a motion to table here?
You have, yeah, you have time, you have until July 24th to take action on this. Your next meeting is July 1st.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah, sure.
I can make a motion to table, application 19-28. Do I put a date in here, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make a.
In a second?
I'll have that catch back. If I need to, I can give it to you.
Actually, they need to get one over there.
Someone want a second?
A second for the motion?
Ford wants a second.
Well, not in the middle of the motion.
Second.
Okay.
My name is Ford Jansen, Three Fox Den, and I'm in charge of operations at the PAC, and usually run the forklifts and move the 1,300 chairs, and I want to fully understand, as you know, we wanted to put this on the backside of the barn, even though we do have legal right to do that, that another board felt they wanted in front. But all we're trying to, right now, when you go down there, you'll see a whole bunch of chairs covered with ugly tarps, sitting on the grass, the wetlands. All this is gonna do is a shed with an angle thing, and a tarp to hide them so they don't get wet, and we can drive in and out in the end. And as Bill says, it'll go away after the last event, and then we move the chairs, as we've done every year, into the, into the barn. So I guess, you mentioned shutters, a shutter, would that make it more of a permanent structure, or, I'm confused, and I don't mean to be.
Looking for a different material than a tarp.
And Ford, do you go in from the ends, or do you go in from all six sides, or all six ways?
No, from the sides. The way we envision is you go in from the end, face, you go from north to south.
Okay, because I got the impression from previous presentations that you're going in from every side.
Yeah.
No, because they're.
So I'm not sure why it has to be flexible on those sides, then, why it needs to be tarp, if it's going to be kind of permanent.
Well, because for airing out, if the chairs are wet, like, like they were before the high school graduation last Friday, and if we have an event and they're wet, we put them in there, we can bring the tarp up and air them out. They're already starting to rust, and we invested a lot of money in these chairs, so that's why we're, and plus, with the aging volunteers, to wrap them the way they are now, it just takes forever, in the dark, when they're doing an event, to do them with tarps and such. So this was what we thought a very logical way to approach it. And originally, we started off with what we thought was going back, but now, obviously, we're in front, so, I don't know, I just want to, we want to, we want to get, we're scheduled, if we get approval, to build this on the fourteenth of July, and to get on with it, so I guess we need specific instructions from you as to what, and I don't know, I'm not building, and other people are, and Mark Deming is, but I don't, I guess I want to understand exactly.
We had made our suggestions at the last meeting. We made these suggestions.
Yeah, I wasn't the last meeting, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We were.
We were, and so, I don't know who was representing, we are in favor of doing the roof, like you said, and having a storage area, we're just looking for something other than a tarp, because this is something that everybody sees as you come into that parking lot. This is what they see. So unfortunately, because the chairs can't go on the backside, we want to be specific as to what material is going to go on.
Would a red tarp work as to match the barn or something? I guess I don't understand.
We're looking for wood or some other material than a tarp.
Well, I guess we'll have to.
There were other suggestions at the last meeting, so I would meet with town staff and see, they were the ones that had given us some suggestions.
All right, I'm sorry to.
It's okay.
I'm just trying to get up my head.
Yep.
Okay, well, we have a motion and second, all in favor of tabling?
We're tabling nineteen twenty-eight. Aye.
Okay, aye.
You're an aye.
You aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Do you want to invite them back in?
All right.
We're making lots of friends tonight.
You know.
Kevin, there's no way to disqualify authorization to put the roof up.
Oh, there was another one.
Well, they can put the roof up, they just can't put a siding up.
Do they need our motion here to put the roof up?
Yeah, I don't know what the application is.
Nineteen thirty-one.
Well, the question was, do they need?
Well, we could actually approve the barn without siding.
Well, it is an, so it's an open aired.
It's a shed roof.
Right.
It's basically like an overhang. It's a lean-to, for all essential purposes, yeah.
Yeah, so we actually asked to have it covered.
So the floodplain, I think your issue that you guys kept running into was the view of the chairs because it's on the front.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. And apparently, at the last meeting, you were the one that presented to us, they, there was no.
Missy presented to you at the last.
Okay, I was going to say, I wasn't sure if that was that meeting or two meetings ago.
No, it was Missy's meeting.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, because this is a pretty simple thing, but you have to drag on from one meeting to the next, to the next.
Or to watching the video.
I can understand the frustration.
New business, we have an application for Simmsbury Town Signs, Simmsbury Town Shops, application nineteen thirty-one, for sign permit for an additional sign for the Board and Brush Creative Studio.
You have to give your name and address.
Give your name and address.
I'm in for two seconds. Megan McHugh, agreement design graphics, I did the drawing for this. Although I think you all may be looking at a different, you may be seeing on the sign what appears to be a very bright yellow border. Is that correct?
Online, we got that, but, no, we have a, we don't have the bright yellow on here.
Okay, that's correct, because designers saw something different. Okay, I just wanted to know where you sent this. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this was reviewed by the Design Review Board this evening, and they gave a favorable recommendation. They're looking to replace, there's signs in the back where Taekwondo used to be located, and what now is L Designs. There's a sign above the entryway for L Designs, they're looking to move the sign where, that used to be over the Taekwondo, put it above the L Design. The picture they provided, you see a logo on the awning for L Designs, that's supposed to be removed, that's a dated photo, along with, see the maroon sign that used to be for Taekwondo, I think, Taekwondo. There's awnings that are going there, so there will not be signs over that window. So this is consolidation of all the signs, and they're trying to keep with the color scheme of the other tenant that will be sharing the wall space above the door. So I'm sorry to steal your thunder.
Perfect. I was just going to say, I could probably present the easiest application you'd probably heard all night. I'm Mike Cosilla, K-O-S-I-L-L-A, I'm at thirty-one Hillside Drive in Ellington. I happen to be friends with Gary and Patty, who are at a wedding in Montana, and I know a little bit enough about zoning to be dangerous, so I drew the short straw. Again, you have the application in front of you, it's a two-by-six sign, again, hopefully in keeping with some of the signage that is out there, and some of the signage that the Taekwondo shop previously had out there. Again, it'll be extremely illuminated, there are two drop-down lights presently there that they hope to be able to raise up above the, above the proposed sign. So again, if you have any questions, certainly my best answer.
Okay. You're talking about the two, the two lights that are over the awning.
Yes.
Going to be moved to over the top of the two signboards.
There's actually, there's actually two lights presently above the hair salon that match the. I only have one, because I wasn't certain what you had, but there are two lights there presently.
And their mountings will be covered by the new sign.
And their mounts will be raised.
Oh, they're raised, okay.
Okay.
Oh, okay, thanks.
And so, did I hear that the color scheme of the lower sign is now reflected in the proposed new sign?
Yeah, so what color is the new sign? Is it, is what we're seeing?
It is what you're seeing. Pretty simple.
And what relationship do those colors bear to the sign below it?
Again, it's just the same, same size, same.
Same font.
Scallop design, yeah, again, pretty, pretty plain, not a lot of, not a lot of bright neons or anything like that. Pretty subdued.
Because actually, this site is in the same regulation as the previous.
Same owner, too.
Not anymore.
Actually, this is, this is a wall-mounted sign, so that's a whole different animal than the freestanding sign.
This is what sign?
So, so because it's wall-mounted, they, they have the latitude to do a different, they're just trying to keep, you know, within the same theme as what the other, so you didn't see a conflict between the designs.
And again, when they took the awnings down, I believe they removed three wall signs as well, so there'll be less, less signage actually on the, on the property. I think the awnings actually, they'll be presented a little bit better also. Jackie, any questions?
I have no concerns with the sign.
Right. No issues. Yeah, I'm good with this one. This one's fine. Donna?
I'm good.
Just a question, in the absence of a staff report, and I'm missing a page, there is no staff report on this, right? Well, let me just ask you, does this meet the size limitations for the building and the zoning regulations? Okay.
Okay, do you hear a motion to approve? Can you make it up?
Well, the only one I need is the, the, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the application number nineteen thirty-one of Patty and Gary Hunter, Agents, Simmsbury Town Shops LLC, owner, for sign permit for additional signage for Board and Brush Creative Studio on the rear of the existing commercial building on the property located at nine twenty-sixth Hot Metal Street, with the condition that an administrative zoning permit is required for the construction of the sign. I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six, nothing, thank you. If I might add, they do have a shed, which is spectacular, and they're looking forward to coming to Simmsbury as well.
Can you actually describe the business? Just very, very brief.
They're mostly friends with my wife, but, but when they said they're opening up a business where you can go in and make wooden signs, like, really? They're going to do that? It's taken off. It's, if you go on, if you Google Board and Brush Summers, the signs that even my wife made are spectacular. They're just, they're just, it's a top-notch, and it's, we've got friends who are moving from Connecticut to North Carolina, and the going-way party is on Sunday, and basically, they've got a rustic-looking sign with the outline of the state, and said, raised in Connecticut, and there's two hearts, where in Windsor and Bloomfield, where they were both raised, and they said, the sign is, it's spectacular.
Nice.
So the customers want to make their sign.
Weddings and bachelorette parties and work functions and things like that, they said, the signs, I said, it's, I can't believe how nice they actually come out.
Cool.
Good, thank you very much. Okay, we have application nineteen thirty-two to set a public hearing for July first. July first?
It's already actually advertised July first, there's no action, request of the commission.
Okay, so now we're to general commission business.
I just have one correspondence to hand out, this is for regulation updates. Do you have them?
I have them, so I'm not going to give you what you already have. If you don't have what I call off, let me know, and I'll give you a copy. Regulation cheat sheet.
Yep.
All versus new, everybody have that?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Review and questions for the commission regarding agro tourism?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Boarding house, family, in hotel definitions, draft?
Yes, it's on the back, what we have.
Oh, okay.
That's good.
And home occupations?
Yep. Now we're cooking.
Yeah, so, we don't really need to talk about the cheat sheet, but obviously, as we're working on the regs, I thought it would be nice for you guys to see sort of what's been removed, what's been added. We haven't added much, because we're working on stuff with you guys, but, and then we just have some discussion stuff at the bottom, just as notes for us more than anything. We can certainly go over any of these, if you guys want to go over them now, or if you want to wait until we really have a workshop on the regs, that's fine, too, but I thought this would make it easy.
What's McKenzie issues?
So McKenzie is a state Supreme Court case, which says that zoning commissions cannot grant waivers in their regulations, and we have a lot of waivers in our regs. So the only circumstances in which you can grant waivers are ones that have concrete standards, measurable standards associated with them. Ours do not. They say things like, the commission may waive, you know, fifty percent of parking, but there's no standards associated with it. I made that up, I've been just winging it. So what we need to do as staff is, once we have a document that we're working with, and we've sort of added stuff in, and we're kind of at a real draft point, is go through and look for the words modifications or waivers, highlight those, and then talk about the language associated with each of those, and correct them or get rid of them.
Increasing the site coverage by fifty percent, for example, is exactly the.
That's exactly one of those circumstances.
And that's actually, that's actually something we'd want to talk to you about, because under our MS four permit, we're actually supposed to decrease the total area of coverage by two percent within the urbanized area of town. That's our state stormwater permit. So our zoning regs conflict with our state stormwater permit, where, which state stormwater permit, we get, we can get fined for not following the regs.
How long have we been out of compliance?
Well, this is year two, so year two, this is the first year that this, this standard is, has applied.
So it's not new.
It's, excuse me?
It's not new.
This standard is new this year for the MS four.
It's new this year.
Yeah, which is why, if you see, we added it under new regulations for MS four, to change as part of the regulation update.
It's just the MS four permit, the standards have gotten very strict.
Yeah.
And what is the leverage that the state has to make us do this? Is this a command, or?
Well, we could be fined, the town of Old Saybrook was actually fined, because they decided for three years to ignore the state, and the state did not collect their fines, it was over a hundred thousand dollars in fines, because they kind of agreed to be the front-runners for stormwater management in the state, so they've been very proactive since. That's just the risk we run if we ignore the requirements, the MS four permit.
Somehow, a government agency, finding another government agency is like, why is that? Anyway, so they'll fine us, okay. It's a motivator.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, how about if we do look at the old regulations items to be removed? Is that easy? I mean, do we need a lot of preparation to discuss that?
No, I mean, do you guys all have copies of the current regs with you? That's the problem.
I'll have to bring them.
I think the best bet, honestly, I think we should dedicate either.
A workshop.
Yes.
A whole meeting to just a workshop?
Yes.
Where we can concentrate on the regs and do exactly what you just said, go, go through, and.
Yeah.
I think that's how, because when you try to fit it in to the end of a meeting, it's really hard to do that. So that's why we're sort of feeding the information, so you guys can digest, make notes on the sheets that we gave you, and discuss, and then have a workshop and really start putting these together, so that, you know, come, hopefully, September, we can have a public hearing to adopt regs.
So we just have to designate one of our next meetings?
We're off in the month of August, so we're going to accomplish all this in July.
Yeah.
Well, there's a hundred pages, and over a hundred pages in what you sent out, and I spent several hours going through about seventy pages of it.
Yeah, I know. But I decided not to do that, because I didn't know what I was looking for, what had been changed, and what was existing, so I didn't want to compare.
Well, it's pretty much.
To word documents, you could just.
It's the regulations we have reformatted, it's not new regs, and it really isn't modifying what exists, but I think there are things that we should be looking to modify in those regs.
Can we designate a meeting?
So, what I could try to do, Bruce, it would be very difficult to do the word document side by side, just because the sections have all changed, just because we changed the format, but what I could do is go through and do like prohibited use, like, these are removed, so they're no longer in the regs, so I could tell you what section these are in in the old regs. And then I could point out in the new regs where just these minimal things have been added. Everything else, of course, is not added, and there are separate documents to discuss. So I could do that.
Well, let me make this easier, I, I'm not, I don't want to monopolize, offering our perspectives individually, but I'm not an organizing person, I don't really care what order this stuff, what I want is a document that's, that's searchable, a searchable format, so I can go find the definition of a boarding house, or I can go find what, you know, B to Bs are, et cetera, et cetera. I don't care what order they're in.
Yeah.
Yeah, once this new document is adopted, it will be, it will also be, you'll be able to click on a section of the reg, and it will bring you to that section, instead of going to the document.
But see, part of that statement is a moan that we're agonizing over the order. You know, since Jamie left, and I thought we, the understanding was, we had a consultant working on the new regs, and what I've always been interested in since I came to zoning in two thousand and seven, was a contemporary set of new regulations, done all at once, ready to be adopted, and ready to go. We talk about it, we spend money on consultants, a lot of money over the last dozen years, and we don't get there. One year turns into another, and we have wonderful intentions, and we have great staff that we're very proud of, the effort that you guys give. I'm not complaining, I'm observing, and so. I don't really care what order this stuff, what I want is a document that's, that's searchable, a searchable format, so I can go find the definition of a boarding house, or I can go find what, you know, B and Bs, or et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, and that's what they're created as.
I don't care what order they're in.
Yeah, yeah, once this new document is adopted, it will be, it will also be, you'll be able to click on a section of the reg, and it will bring you to that section, instead of going to the document.
But see, part of that statement is a moan that we're agonizing over the order. You know, since Jamie left, and I thought we, the understanding was, we had a consultant working on the new regs, and what I've always been interested in, since I came to zoning in 2007, was a contemporary set of new regulations, done all at once, ready to be adopted, and ready to go. We talk about it, we spend money on consultants, a lot of money over the last dozen years, and we don't get there. One year turns into another, and we have wonderful intentions, and we have great staff that we're very proud of, the effort that you guys give. I'm not complaining, I'm observing. And so, you know, I would like to see an approach that could get us over the goal line, rather than, and maybe not in perfect condition.
I think she just said she's trying to have this adopted by September.
I'd like to, I mean, I realize you guys don't need...
That's not doable, Jackie, that isn't gonna happen.
I think it is, actually.
We had special meetings last October, so unless you're saying you're not inclined to have special meetings, that's a whole different conversation. But we had quite, we had two last August.
Bruce, for the first time, we have a document, we have 100 pages of stuff to edit and to look at, and I think it's incumbent on us to do that. We can't do it in a meeting, because it would take...
Yeah, I know.
Hours. But we, we all ought to sit back and look at what's there, become familiar with it, and then let's have a workshop, where we spend an hour and a half or two hours to sort out the things that we, we have reviewed.
Right.
And then we'll get there, because you're right, we've been gonna do this, and gonna do this, and gonna do this.
Yeah.
But we're closer...
Do we want to schedule, say, the second meeting in July? Right now, I'm not aware of applications that are coming in, that we can devote to regulation update.
There's a moratorium in regulations. No, a moratorium in applications. Yeah, no, let's, let's take the second meeting.
Tentatively do that, unless there's something that comes in that's, you know, an applicant needs to get come through that night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, are we not agreeable to meeting in August?
It's not a good idea.
Let's do the 15th, and then let's see where we...
It's just a matter of us, it's not a lot of people, it's us, are we available or not?
I can do August, I would say maybe we start with July 15th, if we need to move it, we move it into August.
Well, it's gonna take more than one meeting.
Yeah. If we get enough done in August, where we have enough feedback on some of these other, like miscellaneous things, I think we can get a good document going, so that after July, we'll work to integrate whatever we talk about, send you guys out a draft for the month of August to look over, and then we can meet again and discuss that draft, so that we're moving the process along.
I think your two items here, the agritourism and the home occupation merit good discussion time on their own, because the rest of it, you're talking about, you know, it's existing regs, just reformat it.
Yes.
But these are kind of new things, and so I would say you...
Why don't we start with this?
Yeah, start with one of those, you know, at the next meeting, and then the next one at the next meeting, well, we're gonna do the whole thing at the next meeting.
Yeah, and just so you know, the definitions, I had talked to you guys about the definitions before, I just wanted you to see, these were sent to Bob D., and I'll see him on Thursday at Legal, and I'll ask if he's had a chance to review them and give us feedback. Our current definitions have a lot of overlap in between these categories that you're seeing here, so this is an attempt to differentiate those categories from each other, from an enforcement perspective, because as they stand now, it's extremely difficult, based on our definitions, to enforce boarding house versus family versus bed and breakfast versus in, and there's not a lot of differentiation between the two, and I think...
Right now.
Right now.
Yeah.
It makes it very, very hard to enforce.
Yeah.
So, this is an attempt to kind of differentiate all of them, so that it is enforceable by our zoning officer. It does have to go through Bob D., especially the family one. This family definition, though, is, has passed the fair housing test. It's a district court case, a federal district court case, that's actually very old now, it's probably a good 20, 25 years old now. So it's kind of withstood this test of time, so, provided he's okay with these, or if he sees something from an enforcement standpoint that wouldn't work, you know, we're looking for that feedback from him.
Well, quickly, isn't it a little more, with the family one, a little more restrictive? Because it says three unrelated.
It is.
Are we five now, or something?
We're at five, which conflicts with our boarding house reg. And we have run into that, we have that situation in town, it's been an ongoing situation for about six years.
Actually, it goes back to 96.
Actually, yeah, but it's, it's, you know, ramped up over time, yeah.
Are we at five unrelated?
Yeah.
Yep.
But you do allow, are they a functional family, or are they, you know, versus a dysfunctional family? Are we gonna regulate functional versus dysfunctional families?
If we have to, Kevin.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna, when we get to each one of these, are you gonna share with us the source and the material?
So, this is, there's no one source for any of this material. This is us pulling regs from, you know, 10, 15, 20 different communities, and picking out things that we thought might work here in Simsberry, because every community is different. These are just starting points. Like, the agritourism one, I just gave you definitions, there's not a lot of agritourism, actually, there's only two, I think, in the state.
What was the other one?
Yeah, where was the other one?
Middlefield?
I don't know, I do have those, these definitions did not come from this, this came from a agritourism website out of Vermont. They have a lot more agritourism-related regs than we do, and this is just, do you guys want agricultural tourism, agritivities, non-agriculture-related uses? These are really just discussion starting points, and then we work from there.
Yeah, because each one of these has questions to it, like, you know, the parking, because, you know, do we really want our firms to be paved over in order to do...
Right.
Yep. Right.
Wine tasting.
Yep, weddings and parking, and...
These are just strictly conversation starters.
Yeah, that's what I say, each one of these could be a very in-depth discussion, as one little signed paragraph could.
And as you know, our home occupations, we, I'll move on to that, just so you guys can review it. Again, this is a draft, Mike has his own draft, we can share that with you, too. It's similar, but a little bit different, that we can send to you guys, but essentially, we have our permitted-as-of right, which is pretty basic in our regs, and then we have this special exception, and the special exception is very subjective, and there's, even our standards are pretty subjective, when you go through. A tiered system like this, which a lot of other communities have, is not so subjective. I think it makes it easier for the commission to make a decision, also makes it easier for the public to know what is or is not allowed as a home occupation, which I think is also key.
No, no. Where Bruce came up, you know, with the, with his secondary, the tier two has the 25%, tier three doesn't, you know, just says clearly secondary, without a, without a percentage.
Yeah, we have a percentage to that.
Yep.
But once you put a number in it, you're gonna get hung by it.
And the Airbnb comes in...
But I think we'd be okay with a number like a 25%, as opposed to what Bruce was saying, 50 to 85%.
And actually, the tier two, the way they're doing it, it's by, by staff review, really.
Yeah, the tier two would be.
So the hairdresser, I, I...
Right.
Well, actually, the hairdresser would not work, because it involves customers coming to the dwelling.
Yeah, that would still be a reasonable occupation.
Yeah.
That's similar to West Hartford's system in their regs, that's how theirs operates. We tried, this, we tried looking at all different towns, just to say, okay, who has a tiered system? What's the difference between the tiers? And basically, you know, say, like, so you have that, that person is just running, like the Glenn Schalter, I have a computer, I operate on my house.
He's one.
No one comes to my, my home, I do everything via the phone, or I go to their place. Then, the next level would be is that, that, that next little...
The next one would be the baker guy.
Yes, the cottage food license guy could be considered that.
Yeah.
Where he's making his breads and whatnot, you, he's, he's...
Just in the kitchen.
Just doing it in the kitchen.
He's 25%?
Right.
And everything is going out, no one's coming to the house, nothing looks different from the road, and then the last one could be the, you know, for example, the salon that you saw off of Colonial Drive.
That would be the third one.
That would be the third one, because she's got customers coming here. So you got a concern of, you know, residential character impact that neighbors have, so...
Right.
Right now, as Robin said, your regs are pretty discretionary on what's customary and what's not, which is, we think that you may want to consider this kind of tiered setup.
Doesn't have to be with what we wrote in here.
Yeah, no, no, I like the idea, because, you know, the review that we had to do today was very big.
Yes, it's really tough.
And I think it does not, you know, it's not helpful, it's not helpful.
Well, I don't think it's helpful to the commission, and I also don't think it's helpful to an applicant who comes in, because they don't know what the expectations are. So, this gives expectations of clearly what you're gonna be allowed to do or not do. You can add to these, obviously, you can take away things if you don't think they're appropriate, but at least it gives them some standards that they can look at.
Well, I would offer this, too, that as we engage in that conversation, leave us not forget, one of the implications of today's, you know, the last three meetings, process with 45 Old Farms, is I feel strongly we should avoid enabling an applicant to be applying for two different forms of residential lodging in one residence. They're already, they already have an ADU, and now they're back for the rest of the building. That's in my mind. Or call it a B and B, I, we don't know what a B and B is, but I don't want to give somebody, I mean, I just don't see that working in a residential neighborhood, that we would let somebody be a B and B and also be an ADU.
We haven't defined short-term rental.
So to get on B and B, just quick, I actually wrote B and B regs, that it's a new section in your regs.
Yeah, I saw that.
Defined it, and put in, you know, standards. And this was, I, I used the town of Litchfield, they have standards for B and B as my model.
Nice.
So that was the only town that really had measurable standards, nothing discretionary, no, you know, I think it's, I think it's by special permit.
I thought the city of Hartford was the only town in Connecticut that had...
They have, no bed and breakfasts and short-term rentals are different.
Short-term rentals. I'm on bed and breakfast.
Yeah.
Because I think, to your point, Bruce, first define what a bed and breakfast is, versus saying just as a home occupation, and then, does Airbnb, if you want to do short-term rentals, does that walk like the B and B? If so, then it falls under the B and B regs. If not, it's in its own little world.
Well, like Kevin said...
And then, to Kevin's point, is it something that you should, you want in your new regs, or do you think it should go straight to the, to the ordinance room, and regulate by ordinance?
And we really need to, like, figure that out soon.
And that's something that, as we said, like, a couple meetings ago, that we'd like to revisit that, we just could not do that with this application pending. It just would not be appropriate to have that, discussing that application, then having the conversation, how to support the use...
Right.
Right.
Same meeting. So maybe next meeting, if we don't want to do that tonight...
We talk about the ordinance?
Yeah, and we, we would like an action by the commission, take a vote, say, recommend staff to...
Well, I mean, a few months back, we kind of got to a point where we were going to start pushing the ordinance forward to the Board of Selectmen, but based on this application and feedback we got, we feel like we want to make sure that the entire board feels that way, and that you realize the implications of what you're going to push forward to the Board of Selectmen, because we got the gist, based on the review of 45 Old Farms, that there may be places where you think short-term rentals should be allowed, and where they shouldn't be allowed, and that's not how an ordinance is going to work. You will essentially be approving the use as-of right in your regulations, which means it can go anywhere, and the ordinance, which will be adopted by public hearing process through the Board of Selectmen, will decide what those parameters are, so we just want to make sure you guys understand fully.
Well, you could regulate it by, the ordinance applies if it's within a residential area, and you could have a B and B...
I mean residential, generally, I, I said anywhere, but...
I know, but I'm just saying that we could have an, you know, by right, you could have one, you know, if we say that it's allowed on, then whatever. You could do it that way, and then, but if it's in a more of a neighborhood, residential, it could be regulated by ordinance.
The distinction is state roads versus something else.
Well, by zone, or, or whatever.
Still regulating it by zoning.
How tenuous is that, to tell somebody that they live in one place, and they can do it in another person that can't do it, though?
Well, that's what zoning is all about.
But then you're regulating it by zoning. You guys have to decide whether you want to regulate it, or whether you want it regulated by ordinance, because you can't do both.
Right.
It's one or the other.
But we can recommend, for example, that they only allow 15 per voting district.
You can make any recommendations you want, yeah, to the Board of Selectmen, but we had done that exercise, if you remember, we had that big list we worked off from, but we want to bring it back to you, because of some of the stuff we've kind of heard and the feedback we got from 45 Old Farms, we want to make sure that the entire board feels the same way they felt four months ago, when we had that conversation.
I don't think we were agreement four months ago.
We weren't. No, we were.
There were some things you weren't in agreement on, one was whether it should be owner-occupied during the stay.
Or what that means.
Or what that means, yeah. Yeah, so we'll bring that back, and I think we should kind of iron out those, and you guys may not come to a, an agreement on all those items, but I think at least if we get a majority vote on what you want to put forward, because that's the way the board works, then, you know, I don't think we should be putting anything forward until we know how all of you feel collectively before it goes. And maybe your opinions have changed since you saw a live application on that use in an area in a neighborhood.
We're more experienced.
Yeah, more experienced.
I don't know about that.
It wasn't actually for that use.
A lack of experience is what makes an ordinance so attractive, because it can be shaped, and reshaped, and reshaped.
Anybody else?
No.
No?
So plan on going through the short-term rental next meeting?
I can bring the STRs to the July 1st meeting to go back over.
Yeah.
Good, we have one public hearing then.
Well, so far, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the second meeting will dedicate to regs.
But STR is separate from the definition of a B and B?
Yes, they're not one in the same.
So should that be a definition, too? So, even if it's done by ordinance?
I think it was in the, we have a definition that was in that page that we kind of worked off from three or four months ago, so that's not in this reg thing.
And there's a B and B record.
B and B, but, bed and breakfast, but not, not short-term.
Not short-term.
Stuff for the next public hearing, do you want that back? 1932?
I was talking about the...
The water?
No, we got stuff for you.
Okay.
And actually, on those, do we need to actually get that copied? The, the public hearing notice? I'm just being from a conservation standpoint.
So I told the planning commission last week, and I'll give you the news, we were approved to purchase tablets for the commission, so we're gonna have tablets now.
Yes!
You gotta give lessons on how to use them.